I'm just gonna comment, as somebody who's on the hiring committee, I feel like I can speak to the board that I fully support changing the boardman. I feel that Mr. Stolberg was the best candidate came down of, or in the best interest of the city of St. Clair and allowing him to come in and serve the city. Regardless of his residency for the city's future, I'd argue it's in the best interest of the city.
I agree, and I don't think where he lives is gonna change his dedication to the city.
For Clarence Mason, my earlier statement, there were applicants that lived in the city and applicants who may have wanted to move in this area. Would've been able to relocate if they did not meet the merit qualification, but why they would address this finally?
There was only one finalist in that particular city.
I'd like, I'd like to introduce Bill number twenty twenty-two dash zero five for first and second reading by title only.
First reading, Bill number twenty twenty-two dash oh five. The ordinance amending chapter two, article eight, section two dash one thirteen, the co-ordinances of the city of St. Clair regarding the residency requirement for qualifications for city administrator. Second reading, Bill number twenty twenty-two dash oh five. The ordinance amending chapter two, article eight, section two dash one thirteen, the co-ordinances of the city of St. Clair regarding the residency requirement for qualifications for city administrator.
I vote to approve Bill number twenty twenty-two dash zero five, correct?
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Alderman County, aye. Alderman Park, please, aye. Alderman, aye. Aye. Aye.
There is history that I read about in the city when I was a city administrator. Some may have thought that I wasn't the best city administrator, but I actually lived between here and there, but my wife was an administrator fifteen years ago.
Next, we have Bill number twenty twenty-two dash oh six. The ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an employment agreement with Donald C. Spohler for city administrator.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot my role. I'd like to ask Mr. Stolberg to come to the podium, and I'd like to introduce you and let you know that the recommendation from committee is to approve the hiring of Mr. Stolberg as a city administrator. Get me out of here. And the agreement before you tonight is for a three-year contract. Terms and conditions similar to what we've done in the past. We'll issue, and always there are a few things that are different with each contract based on the negotiations, but I believe this is a fair contract for him and for the city. And I really feel like you're getting a professional city administrator with the hiring of Mr. Stolberg.
Really, I don't have too many questions. This is Mr. Donald Stolberg. Can you everybody, she's very, very pleased.
I think we only had three candidates that were finalists that had worked master's college administration, he was one of them. Interview, after interview, it was unanimous, among the members who were on the committee, so I think you're getting a good administrator.
So I commented during the procedure that once he spoke, we don't need to see anybody else.
Well, I figured he was tough enough, he was running for twenty-two years, something like that.
I'd like to introduce Bill number twenty twenty-two dash zero six for first and second reading by title only.
First reading, Bill number twenty twenty-two dash oh six. The ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of St. Clair to execute an employment agreement by and between the city of St. Clair, Missouri and Donald C. Spohler. Second reading, Bill number twenty twenty-two dash oh six. The ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of St. Clair to execute an employment agreement by and between the city of St. Clair, Missouri and Donald C. Spohler.
I'm with Bill number twenty twenty-two dash oh six. Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman County, aye. 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 Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Motion for a motion.
This is the one, the agreement will affect the board.
Yes. Well, I don't know, who's more excited, maybe Russell because he doesn't get out of here for the second time.
And utterly failed to prepare.
Okay, it's a process.
Welcome aboard. It is very exciting to have you.
I'm excited.
Thank you. Next, we have a resolution, twenty twenty-one dash oh one. Resolution is taking intent to seek funding through the community development block grant program and authorizing the mayor to pursue activities in an attempt to secure funding.
This is the block grant that we had a public hearing on at the last meeting, and this is another step in the process of preparing the application. I've got several documents prepared, I mean, the mayor's design, the resolution authorized her design. The grant, the application will go in, and some future date she'll get another agreement from the Department of Development for the grant. So this is the step to prepare and submit the application, it's due January thirty-first.
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero one, yes, zero one is right.
Yeah, roll call, please.
Alderman County, aye. Alderman Park, please, aye. Aye. Aye.
Next is unfinished business, anytime fitness.
We've searched for an agreement, an older agreement with this company, we've never found one. And with the owner's suggestion last month that anybody that has a Flex card can use that and still obtain their, the same discounted membership price. There really isn't any reason to enter within a, within a new agreement to, for the city to collect the funds. It's just another hassle to put on city staff. No huge benefit to any two or three people, and we have to monitor the collection and the payments. So with that, I think we can remove this from the agenda going forward. At least, I don't see the reason to try and work on an agreement, or something that already works.
If I might break something, I want to stop them in this sprint, and most of the city employees have an ID card. If they wanted to join this, you know, I don't see why they can't get the ID card to this, this business and show it, go, and they get the discount that you want to give them. And then we're out of it completely.
Well, I think the reasoning for the discount was he felt that there was some financial benefit for him at the city collecting the money. And so that's, I think that's why we wanted to agree more than just, we can easily verify those city employees that signed up before, and that wouldn't be a problem. But it was the exchange of the payments that was the issue with the, when we entered agreement union years ago with the same company, they didn't have, they didn't have Flex card. And then as time went on, Flex cards became available and there's free, it's cafeteria plans of free pass. There was really no need to, to enter that kind of agreement now, I don't think.
I believe, I don't think we have the staff there to start doing other people's bookwork. I just think that, you know, I think entering into an agreement with a specific business like this, then would almost obligate us to enter into it with any business that would want to. And before we know it, you know, Goldman Kim's gonna be sitting over there invoicing fifteen different businesses over the months, but they're from now, they're like states. So I think it's better to still let them do it, you know, using the employee ID card.
Yeah, the precedent once you started, and lots of things that would then be employed, that you might be able to get a discount if you don't collect much for the business. I just don't think it's something you really wanna get started, especially if it's not necessary.
Do we, since he came to us and requested that, do we need to make a motion to formally deny or?
I would like a motion to remove from the agenda. We told him at the beginning, we would search for an older agreement, there is nothing we can find that everyone's approved. So unless he comes back with something new, I would move the agenda. Based upon the recommendation of staff, we would have moved to remove from the agenda and not proceed forward with an agreement. That way you got a clean record of why you ended and the recommendation of staff. It would be right for a motion if you don't, if that's your pleasure.
I'll make a motion to put what her business. Would you work it properly?
Based upon the recommendation of staff, the board recommended that we no further negotiations with the company, that employees can be part of it. And remove it, remove it from us.
Second.
You said Sherry, right?
Twenty-seven. Twenty-seven, say.
May I, roll call, please?
Alderman, aye. Alderman, aye. 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 Aye.
Thank you, Chris Ross. First chair, yes. We have to work together. All the two business, planning and zoning position reservation.
I received an email from Wayne Dirk, who's currently serving as the president or chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And because changes in his work commitments, he no longer feels like he can continue on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So he's asked to remind.
My name is Sherry.
There, I think we added one, lost one, so was it eight, four, or seven?
I think it was seven or eight.
He can have a maximum fifteen. Well, you guys, while you were talking, right, for the community, you can have a little bit.
And the cherry gets its response. That co-host.
He hasn't resigned, aye?
He hasn't resigned, but.
The gentleman.
Hasn't, hasn't.
And we added Jennifer. And we added Jennifer Neal.
Authorization request for city administrator to obtain services to complete phase one study for the park.
This is something that came down from the National Park Service. They're the, I guess, the overseer of the cultural and historic preservation studies that require the historic preservation act. And whenever you apply for a grant that involves the surface of soils and areas where previously were Native American. They have to contact and ask if they have any objections to the project, or if they want any studies included. So the Osage Indian, the Osage Nation was contacted, and they said that they wanted to see a phase one study completed for the grant application to replace the playground and add the fitness center to the orchard park. So if we would be paying, I think it's twenty-nine, we got the course back, and they said it'd be two, between two thousand and five thousand dollars. So what, because it's over two thousand, likely over two thousand, I have to give board motion approval to, per to approve this money being spent. So that I'm not violating the yearning policy, because the grant does specifically say you have to follow the yearning policy and completing the service. The last week I sent out three requests or proposals to the companies that were on the list for the Department of County Development. I haven't received them yet, so I don't have a specific number now, but I would, I expect to receive them this week. And I'd like to go ahead and get this moving forward so that grant can keep going. I did call, had agreed at Department of County Development, or, I'm sorry, Land, Land Board, Man, yeah. And she said that they understand that this may, they may not get the study completed, so possibly April, because the, once the ground freezes, they can't dig the hole. So they're okay with the delay, but I'd like to as soon as quickly as possible, so I would like a motion to allow me to purchase this service. Or even to go to two thousand plus the range I have.
I do think it bears mentioning for the other board members that haven't been quite as involved in the process, that this cost will be coming out of the money that we would have to put with the grant. So grant is a matching fund, and so it'll be split, it'll be included in that cost, so just to be clear on that. Because I know it wasn't budgeted for this year necessarily.
She said that she would increase the total grant, grant amount, but whatever the cost is, then fifty percent of that would go toward that. You're right, we don't know when the grant fund is actually, the funding is available by now, but it would probably be worth better to do it here in the fall.
Just from main information, if this wasn't a grant, would we still have to go through the process, having them come out and take a hole with the first artifact?
Well, the federal money is definitely what triggered the requirement, and we were just doing it ourselves, so unless we came across artifacts on our own, then we would have not. That's what they do, they will dig a hole, sift through the soils, if there's no artifacts, and if the site's cleared, if they find the artifacts, then they'll probably be able to take it to our property level. Osage Nation committed, and I would.
One question, this is a different phase one than phase one environmental.
Yeah, this is a phase one archeological. Yeah, phase one, historic and, which will answer my question, I was just saying environmental. Yeah, yes, it's different than the other phase one.
We already did that. Any motion to authorize the city administrator to proceed with the phase one recreation, the building and water conservation grant?
Roll call, please.
Alderman County, aye. Alderman Park, please, aye.
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 Mr. Ross, do you have anything, Ross?
Eric said enough, see you.
Mr. Eddie.
A couple things, one is the Kitchell project is finally out to bid. Bids are due back February tenth, I think there'll be an opening here at City Hall, I believe it's two o'clock that day. So hopefully we'll get some, a lot of contractors and a good price on that. And with my report, I included a sheet from MoDOT, their website. One of their big projects is they are replacing the decks of both the overpasses here in St. Clair. So that project is out to bid now, I think it'll be open in February, starts in March, as a June twenty twenty-three completion date. So my understanding of what they're doing is their plan at Route Thirty overpass is to add some pavement, temporary signals. Why they do that, and then when that is completed, to carry the extra capacity of traffic. Once that's finished, they will close the forty-seven interchange over forty-four. So that bridge deck by McDonald's will be completely closed, they'll remove the deck, replace the deck. When it's, when that part is complete, they'll do the same thing at Route Thirty. They'll close that interchange, replace the deck, and then reopen. So that's gonna be a, kind of a traffic snarl for the city for a while, so. And I didn't find out about this till last week, when I happened to be talking to a contractor, and they're like, well, you guys are gonna be real busy. I'm like, what do you, what do you mean? And he's like, well, they're replacing both the brick decks in town. It would've been the end of the middle prior to, you know, a few weeks before they're gonna open bid. So I just wanted to make the board aware of, I mean, it's good news for our community to have those new things and added shoulders and all that stuff, but it's gonna be a pain in the butt.
Yeah, actually, I read up, I read the Wall Street Journal last weekend, the federal government is typically, bridge projects are eighty, twenty match. The federal government's now removed that twenty percent match for bridge projects, so like fifteen thousand bridges, they have the same kind of work done in the next year. I think there's forty-five thousand that need it, fifteen dollars, so if you travel, next year, if you buy them, there's a lot of bridges that are getting worked on.
Yes, when we get some info, we can put it out on Facebook, things like that, to get some things from MoDOT.
Do you have anything?
I have another one within my report.
Alderman, aye. I don't have anything with this one. Mr. Ross?
Yeah, there are other business, just a couple things that are happening that we needed to make aware of. One is Alderman County, that's what it's on the new license, so she'll be retiring in April. I don't know if she knows, I think she started when I was here before, now she's leaving, I don't know what it is about me, but she's asleep. Yeah, that's. The other thing is, we've got a couple roof problems. One is community center, and that one looks like it's probably something, the metal roof looks like it's in pretty good condition. It has had some structures erected on it, it's got solar panels and a communication bridge device that's been installed on it. And it's a small leak that apparently is going into office of the, and this color you can see with the panel. So I'm trying to, the problem is finding somebody that will come and do a little bit of job for time and material. I think I've found somebody over the weekend, I'm waiting for the call back, but it's probably, we can get him in there for a hundred dollars. If I get that, the less bigger problem is the roof on City Hall, which was actually worked on when I was here before. I don't know what it is. We had it evaluated, and I've got a estimated cost to repair it at seventy thousand dollars. So that's gonna be a much bigger bid, and probably would require dipping into reserves in order to meet that going forward. However, I'd like to put together some specs, obviously, it's over twenty-five thousand, that's a little bit of a bidding process. But I think that the sleeking, the gym.
Police department.
Police department, that's what we did years ago, so we have leaks, and I'm sure the ice is probably making it worse. But we need to go ahead and get specs together, send it out with proposals, and see what we can, but it could be a reason that the cost is very high. Membrane roofs are, I think they do require a lot of maintenance. I think the last time, about twenty-five thousand spent on it, two thousand eighteen, there was some kind of a liquid flow process that worked for a while, but it's all over. Years ago, when we had a problem, the reason I'm a little bit wary of it, we had a similar opinion, and then I found a company, Lawa. They came and looked at it, and they did some kind of cutting, resealing the materials up, and they were able to, two thousand. But I don't know how long it lasted, you know, so, they always leave, people believe they don't, always leave the door.
I love it, what, two years ago? Two years ago, we were putting buckets in the secretary's office and everything.
And the court, they were buckets. But it's been an annoying problem, probably needs to be addressed on a form of permanent, basically fifty, twenty-five thousand dollars here and there, and still leaving, so. But if you need to, so, they're gonna probably do it. And lastly, the agreement with Popshells Room for auditing and financial reports, which was where they had been now six, ended in twenty twenty, which is fiscal year twenty twenty. So the last audit they did for twenty twenty was the highest time, is the last audit that they're under agreement. The old agreement does provide for renegotiating an additional agreement going forward. I'm kind of thinking because they changed ownership and name, that maybe I should go ahead and find the old RFPs, put them up again, and send them out to, maybe we'll get a hold of them. Everybody in the county is really happy with Popshells Room, they're working with them here in Union, and the county, some of the nation, audit force, I think, is up there. Anyway, they're a very popular company, and there's very few companies that do, and it's a lot of, they may be the only one we get. For keeping the priorities and purposes, I think, to be able to, to be able to get the proposal back within a couple of weeks, and have somebody where they worry certain. Lastly, we're working on mowing, agreement, proposals, still working on specs, we needed to add a couple lots to the required, through the original whole mowing process. I wanna make sure the agreement is, can be used on a pick and choose basis, they're giving us bids on individual projects, so that if we have staff, agencies doing some of the mowing, we can save funds there. I know Mr. Hallipen, visiting K P, would like to try and mow the parks, and see if it's possible to do that in-house. And I believe the agreement plan, work is on, mow there, facility, and then there's other facilities, there's staff involved, and we'll be on this if we're there. So hopefully we can, they can choose what we need, hopefully if the letter gets to us, we can advise and ask them to come and do the additional mowing that they gotta do to close the park. And that would be, I'm not too sure that it's probably a big, that's, I mean.
You know, I said, it's not a problem, I'll continue to have the property over at the well, I'll come back out.
I took that out. Yeah, I appreciate it. Yeah, it's close, if you wanna do it, go ahead.
It takes five minutes.
It's like.
I wanted to address, I'm looking at the building department's report. It looks like we are missing some, closing out of permits, and it looks like we were pretty far behind. All the way back to twenty eighteen, nineteen, I think, no, twenty twenty. So just moving forward, I know we've had a lot of changes and things happening in that department, but that's been more recent. I'm just wondering, moving forward, how can we monitor that department a little closer to make sure that we're staying on track and not getting so far?
Well, I think we were fortunate, they had a ability to step up and keep things going at their current rate, and fortunately, finally, we came to come into the building inspection, the construction. But it is abandoned, the department's still not functioning as it should, and at least until February, I have no, no, I need more information since February, you know, how we're going to proceed going forward. So that's where that mandate, that needs adjusting further. Working now, it's going, some of those things were committed by Mr. Bursey, left, there's a box over there, a hundred and sixty-five, so. and hundreds of, so, document, and, uh, Kimberly Miller is going to do a doc to see when to be closed down, what we just don't know, and I think they have to, if, if, I was.
I was just gonna say that I spoke with Kimberly, and some of the, the, is on there, and I think that you'll see there, but those were things that she doesn't know or have control over, because it was not her position at that time, so, um, she is going to archive the files with that information, but the ones that are still, like, from twenty-twenty-one, they might not be ready to be closed out, because those permits are ready for you, so like twenty-twenty-one, so say, the, an April permit that was done in twenty-twenty-one is still open until April of twenty-twenty-two, so those closing out on those ones could potentially be because they're not done with the work yet. Are there some that have been missed? Absolutely. Is she working, is she going forward on getting those yet, or myself to get those done for her?
It's actually working better than I thought it would be, when I thought we'd be back in the crisis, it was, right now, but hopefully we can avoid going back to where we were before, Mr. King, and Dan, and then, super, keeping that going.
I just have one thing, I, when you're a short staff, everybody, it's not everybody, and, it's just, but, but everybody's doing a fantastic job, I mean, the streets look great on Saturday, um, the nice stuff that I'm taking lights down, filling them up, and I just wanted to thank everyone for that, especially the park, I've never seen a great page report, um, for the park department, I have to put in multiple positions, he's been a huge asset, but I just wanted to say anything to you all, yeah. Other than that, um, I don't have anything.
But one thing, well, this is my, a last meeting, this is a meeting, I think, especially me, and as the head of the city administration, I went back to public board, I'll write the information, and we've been several weeks since working with me, that we would work on, and see if that's moving forward, and hopefully able to resolve that, move transition to Mr. Silver, and if that's February seventh, we will be, uh, out.
I'm sure everybody, unless it's the, Art has had no one to share one line with, so.
Yeah.
Does anyone in the audience have anything they wish to bring before?
Yeah, executive session, somebody need to move, it'll be executive session.
Make a motion to, uh, move into executive session pursuant to RSMO six-ten dash dot zero twenty-one.
To negotiate contract or personnel matter.
It's going to be sent, right?
What?
To discuss contract or personnel matter, that's.
Roll call.
I'm on the now. I'm on the front.
Hi.
Hi.
I think we can, I always get to inhabit them, there are any that publish on, whatever you need, sometimes it's, it's, it's a, a session, we have to do, we would, all the time, we can, we can get in trouble, like going into.